This meeting of the Caldwell City Council, City of Caldwell, Texas is now called to order. Today's date is Tuesday, October the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. A quorum is present, so we will proceed. The invocation will be led by Allen Willis, and the pledge to the American and Texas flag will be led by Kevin Novak.
Well, we, uh, well, thank you for being here today in the land of the city. Thank you for your love and your grace, and always let us make the very best decision possible. And everybody have a safe trip home tonight. Did you sing it for us?
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the D.C. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good afternoon, um, you would think that we're like, oh, my God, what's happening? But I'm actually thrilled to see everyone here, and I welcome you all to the City of Caldwell City Council meeting. Um, our wish actually is that this room would be this full every single third Tuesday of every month, because that means you have a concern about our wonderful community, and that is what we like to see and what we like to know about. So do we have any citizens to be heard on agenda items? None? Is this the only one for non-agenda? Okay, we have three citizens to be heard on city-related topics. And that is Leon Couch, Joanne Majors, and Julie Baker. And if you can come up to the podium. If you're speaking on the same thing, do you want five minutes total, five minutes each? Are you a group effort? Don't take that long, okay? Thank you.
Hi, Joanne. Well, I was a little... They don't give a professional speaker the microphone. Sorry. Thank you, it's an honor to be here. We're here to represent the homeowners in the fifty residences off of Country Club Drive, as well as Leon Couch and the businesses on this road. We have several questions about the supposed Sage Oil Well that is to be drilled on the whole property. These are some of our concerns and questions. We are aware that Sage has an easement through the property belonging to Mr. Bond, who's here this evening. We are aware that Sage has an easement through the property. Do they have a permit for the five-acre pad? Is there in fact a conversation about the road going through this location via Country Club Road? Or are there other options? Who will be responsible for the road upkeep and repair? Are rules in place for the city to protect this city street? Is the city involved in any proceeds or mineral rights in any way? There must be another way in and out of the neighborhood if this happens. Will you open up Gray Street? We all know that's not a crowd pleaser. We have concerns about our safety and our health, our water table, our children, our grandchildren, who ride bikes, walk children, as many golf carts that are up and down this small road. Finally, number one, are you willing to risk the safety of everyone coming in and out of Country Club Drive off of Highway thirty-six, which is already trepidous? Are you willing to destroy the tax base for this neighborhood? This is your tax base. Where do we find the rules and regulations the city has regarding drilling and the use of city property for billing purposes? And number four, and finally, Mr. Bond has plans for a lovely development of almost thirty homes in this area. What would that do to the tax base? Are you willing to jeopardize this opportunity?
Um, I would like to make a request, um, from our neighborhood that, um, the city make sure that if they are moving forward or any changes that they're going to be ma- you know, any decisions that they're going to be making, that we are made aware of that. Um, I know that your plans would be, if you allow this, to upkeep the road. My concern is that other projects, um, that the city has done have not been well taken care of in our neighborhood. And, you know, it's hard for us to believe, um, that proper steps would be taken because of the way things have been taken care of in the neighborhood. So we just ask that, you know, you consider, number one, I think for all of us, is safety of our families.
All right, we're the business owner of the HLC. I don't know if you see. I think Bill. I'm a Circumcise Board member, and I'm also representing a nursing home, uh, Craig today. The issue is turning on thirty-six to Country Club Drive. Uh, it's not wide enough there, we don't feel for eighteen-wheelers returning. If we have a block issue and the ambulance down to the hospital, they do come three or four times a week, you know, over there, so... I don't think, I think if we, if you have to do something with the city, you know, we're excited to do this, I think it needs to get with text back and see what it would take to widen that intersection and make it safer for vehicles to get in and out. And not only just ambulance, homeowners are living in the back of subdivision. Uh, noise effect. You know, our business is bringing people into this town. So if we have more noise and more complaints, we're gonna lose customers and not bring more, bring you to the Caldwell. Over eighteen-wheelers turn into the right front are being driven in her day or every other day. So, I mean, like she was there, we'd like for you to consider if y'all are gonna move forward, at least inform us, you know, we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna need to, we need to do.
On behalf of the City of Caldwell, we appreciate you and thank you for sharing your concerns. Um, we cannot respond to, um, these concerns at this time, maybe in, um, administrative reports. Is this true? Okay. Next item on the agenda consists of the minutes from the last meeting and some additional considerations.
I'm involved, consent is not going to be accepted as ten.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
All in favor of accepting the items on the consent agenda, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes. We now have a public hearing on several subdivisions. And we'll get started with the first one, Quinn Waters Subdivision Annexation, property ID number one zero six four eight. It is a hundred and forty-eight point ten acre tract of land on County Road one oh five. Legal description A zero zero two zero Dickinson L in Wilson County, Texas, followed by discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance annexing Quinn Waters Subdivision, one hundred and forty-eight point ten acre tract of land, property ID number one zero six four eight.
So tonight, um, if you look at your packet, you have, uh, the annexation, um, ordinance, and then following that, the municipal service plan goes along with it. Um, so that's just saying that the city will be providing fire, police, building inspection, finding and cleaning the streets, sort of coverage, and street lighting, water service, sanitary sewer service, and solid waste services. Um, and then other miscellaneous services. Um, and so that is the one hundred and forty-eight acre tract to the west of the, uh, Woodson addition and the main access to the office there of one oh five. Um, so that's the annexation request. Um, the subdivision is the next item, so I'll go in more detail. Any questions?
Mayor, we don't have anyone signed up for the annexation, but if there's anyone here who'd like to make any comments or anything or against... Because it is a public hearing, public hearing, but...
I have one question. And I have a hand off Hull Street. And I didn't, I think it's four oh nine Hull Street. It is thirteen acre tract. Is that in the city limits now?
Talk about on Hull Street?
Hull. Now Hull Street was a division between the city and the city limits. And if this is annexed, would that include, uh, my family has forty acres?
No, the only thing that this would annex would be that specific property.
Okay. So I would have city limits on three sides? No, I, I don't want it annexed, so don't get me wrong, I just want to make sure about what I've got here.
Uh, does there anything to the south of the Woodson addition on the west side of Hull Street that's not annexed? So the only way that it would be brought into the city limits is if you request it to have an annex. So this property is the only property that's being included on this annexation as well?
How many lots is almost so different?
Uh, it'll be five hundred and seven.
And one oh five is the only existing?
Yes.
How many, one oh five is the only existing?
Just so everybody knows, because I had another question about this, and it goes to your question a little bit. The way the annexation works now is you almost have to petition to be annexed. The city cannot go out and, and I don't like the term forcibly annexed, but, but just annex as we will, you know? The law changed two years ago to where either if I wanted to annex a large area, you would all, all the landowners would get to vote whether or not they wanted that annexed, or you would petition the city for annexation. So there's no more large land brands.
Can I ask a question? Uh, I, I live on one oh five, right on the corner of one oh five, highway twenty-one. Uh, or does that mean we're gonna be widening this one oh five? And if so, are y'all gonna be wanting more land to widen one oh five?
I think we would, at, at that specific intersection, that's, that's a text-out intersection, so we, I, I would get to visit the town.
No, I'm talking about the one oh five itself.
Okay, one oh five itself?
Widening one oh five.
Uh, we'll have to look closer. Right now, there are no plans to widen it.
So if you would widen it, uh, would you be facing some of my property to widen it if I, if I did, I did not want to sell to the city?
Well, uh, we'd have to look at what, what right-of-way is already there. I don't know how wide the, the right-of-way is. But, you know, it'd be a conversation will be had later, I, I'm not expecting that, I mean...
Yes, sir.
A general question. Upon annexation and all of the city services that come with that, is there a maximum timeline that the city has with which they have to do all of those services?
So normally there would be, uh, normally the three years that we would have a set of annex, a certain section that there, we would have to have this service in place within three years. But as this project grows, the developer will place all of those, uh, place the infrastructure in there and just tie into our existing system.
Will the service go down Highway twenty-one and move back to the... Or will they start with water and sewer? How are you gonna get there?
Right now, you can predict this if you want, Jeff, but there is an easement between the, uh, Woodson subdivision and the property directly, I guess you would call it, the south, that the sewer will go there.
It'll go down that easement?
Yeah, it'll go down that easement and then water from, from similar locations, but it'll...
How wide is that easement?
Twenty-three.
Five hundred homes is a lot. Is, uh, does one oh five exist? So you have to, well, you can turn left, right, and get out. So I was wondering if I could light. It's one oh one.
That would be a text-out.
This is a five-year project?
Five to seven years.
Five to seven-year project, and, you know, in a, in a purgatory world for the developer, they would sell all five hundred in seven lots in five to seven years. But nobody knows if that's gonna happen. Um, they may sell a hundred homes and be stagnant for a while, so we, we can't simply, simply cannot predict what the traffic is going to be. Do we contact text-out for a light? We simply don't know, because there are other developments in the city limits, and is that the desired development? Is Arrowhead the desired development? Is Edna Hill, you know, so...
Is there a possibility of, of having a connection of roadway between Woodson? I forget what it's called, right there where the hospital, Woodson Drive?
Wait, we can talk about it whenever, we talk about the flat, but it, it is planted that way to where it could tie back in to that area, and to go back, I think the mayor made a good point, you know? When we talk about roadways, we're, we're not sure how these projects are gonna go. If they take off and all five hundred lots get sold tomorrow, that's great, then we'll figure out the, the traffic, but, you know, as a city representative, I hate to go and commit millions of dollars into a project when we don't know the outcome of it. We'll have to kind of play the development as it goes and see where those funds may be spent.
Do we have the water for that subdivision?
Uh, do we have the capacity? Yes.
Do we have the capacity for all of these subdivisions?
Now, I will tell you, as we get into build out of a lot of these subdivisions, we'll, we'll have to look at the wastewater capacity that we have in our plan.
And our utilities?
Which electric, we do not have the electric for that area. We have the, our electric, uh, service areas kind of within the, the bounds of the city right now, maybe just a little bit outside. You've got four utility providers here, City of Caldwell, Bluebonnet, Entergy, and BTU.
Well, I mean, the City of Caldwell, we're staff...
We're working on them.
Well, I would personally say that we're a veteran community of A and M, and we're either gonna have to make a decision to grow or, you know, let somebody else take it, so... It's good for all business, it's good for business, it's good for everyone, so... Let me guys decide.
Any more discussion on Quinn Waters Subdivision property ID number one zero six four eight? Do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance annexing Quinn Waters Subdivision? Do you have a second? All in favor of adopting the ordinance annexing Quinn Waters Subdivision, one four eight point one oh acre tract of land, property ID number one zero six four eight? Raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. Next is Quinn Waters Subdivision parcel ID number one six zero four eight preliminary flat.
So this is the preliminary flat that is being, uh, built up for us at the local tonight. Uh, it's five hundred and seven lot, single-family residential subdivision, um, as y'all just annexed that area. Um, the subdivision has two, um, main access points coming off of County Road one oh five, and those, um, one has a stubout to potentially extend towards the east to connect back behind, uh, the Woodson addition, um, at some future time. Um, and then there is also, uh, a cul-de-sac that has been stubbed out to where it could potentially connect back to Woodson Drive, um, as two potential access points for future extension. Um, there's also, uh, as part of this project, an upgraded lift station that will come in, um, through, uh, working with developers, uh, as they get started on phase one. Um, that'll be kind of the first step in that project. Um, they are keeping the existing retention plan on the property, and that will be used as an affinity, uh, not only for the development, but also to connect, uh, to the Woodson addition at some point, um, with some trails and, uh, hard land. Um, as you can see, I've attached the, um, comments from our review and, uh, after working with strain engineering and the meeting of the team, um, from, uh, development side, they are requesting three variances. Um, one is to allow the public utility easements to be at fifteen feet instead of twenty feet. Um, this is something that, as part of the subdivision ordinance update they're working on, that'll be addressed, um, to reduce that to fifteen feet, so that we don't have to worry about doing a variance request. Uh, the next one is allowing rear setbacks to be ten feet instead of the twenty feet that's currently required. That's something else that we've also talked about as part of the subdivision ordinance amendments. And then the next one is, uh, allowing sharp angle lots, um, between some of the lot lines. Uh, the way that they were trying to get some of those lots in there, they had to make those lots with some sharper acute angles, um, on some of those cul-de-sacs. And so, um, we feel that it's not a detriment to the, um, lot. Um, and so staff and strain engineering, um, feels that the, uh, preliminary flat that's being presented to you with the minor changes, um, as part of those variance requests, will not affect the integrity of the development, and that they're in compliance with the envision Caldwell comprehensive plan and all of the, uh, flood ordinances, uh, related to subdivision and planning. And so with that, um, is there any questions, discussions you'll have?
In fact, there were that length here, and that, uh, I don't know if you call it a stadium or not, is that what you're calling, green space, if y'all are gonna leave? Are y'all gonna put any kind of fence up there?
Uh, there won't be a fence up, um, that's a flood plain, so we can't have any structures inside the flood plain. Uh, there's a floodway area that's also in there, and that's, that's the part that we're not allowed to touch as far as any kind of development. So that'll be left as it is.
What's your side setbacks?
Side setbacks are seven and a half. And then if it's a street, it's fifteen.
So is that, do I have a...
I, I forgot to mention, this is gonna be a variety of lot sizes, so seventy-five foot width lots, um, which would be a total of approximately fifty-five of those. And then, uh, sixty-five foot width lots, that's a hundred and twenty-five total lots. And then fifty-five foot width lots, that's three hundred and twenty-seven. So it'll be a range from larger lots to smaller lots. The larger lots will be placed around the lake, um, and kind of those green space areas. And then the smaller lots will be kind of directed towards County Road one oh five. So as you go back into the subdivision, you'll get to those larger lots. Um, part of this project, uh, the home builders, uh, you can, with it like Oakmont and Bryan or Mission Ranch, those home builders have contributed, um, and so they'll be working on these homes.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Austin Greenberg, and I'm here with Percy Gold. Me, I represent a landowner and companies and leases from a landowner that's just adjacent to this property. Me, who represents the landowner and, uh, companies that leases from a landowner that's just adjacent to this property. And I don't know if this is a time that you want to public comment or not.
Yes, sir, it's a public hearing.
Alright, alright. So, um, we are neither for nor against the subdivision being put in, but we do operate a big creek, I mean, DC Materials LLC operates an asphalt plant there and a concrete batch plant there. And we just want to be on record as letting everybody in the community know that we have a, we have permanent permits for those plants and we, we feel like we have been good corporate citizens for Caldwell and we intend to be, uh, but we, we also intend to take full advantage of our, our permanent permits to, to stay there. And we wanted the, the people that are gonna be developing this area to, to understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I've had problems with people from Woodson subdivision coming over and shooting the arms, breaking glass and stuff. So I mean, how in the world y'all gonna keep these figures in place, pass? If there's not a fence there. And I've got a fence there. I've heard anything about it being, it's reliable, stop. Are y'all gonna do anything to be limited where y'all's property stops?
As far as the flat goes, there's nothing dedicated on the flat because that is in the floodplain, so.
Well, could you please note that consideration we've taken for that?
Any more discussion about, um, the flat or parcel ID number one six zero six four eight?
My name is Jeff Robinson, I'm a civil engineering, we're the surveyors and engineers of the property, so, um, of course, we can't, we don't have the case and documents, funding and everything, so I haven't had to say much, but tell me your questions.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion to approve the preliminary, preliminary flat for Clean Water subdivision? One hundred and forty-eight point one oh three acres, parcel ID number one zero six four eight?
Some group?
Do we have a second? All in favor of accepting the, or approving the preliminary flat? Raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. Next one, Edna Hill's subdivision. Phase two, parcel ID number six one one three three, preliminary flat for a residential subdivision of approximately zero point nine four acres, followed by discussion and possible action on approving the preliminary flat for Edna Hill subdivision. Parcel ID number six one one three three.
Alright, so this, uh, preliminary flat that's being presented to you tonight is the Edna Hill's phase two. So this is technically just an extension of five lots that face Thomas Williams Drive. Um, so this is the zero point nine four acres and it will consist of those five single-family lots. Um, the packet that you have also provided with a preliminary plan for the phase three portion as well, and then a remainder is dedicated. The reason for that is because the, the complete development has some access issues regarding, um, emergency access and our code says that you can't have more than fifty lots, um, with one point of access. And because, um, Edna Hill, Edna Hill's lane is the main access point, um, going beyond phase three, um, at this time without any way to connect back to either County Road three hundred or back to Highway twenty-one. Um, we advised the developer to just proceed forward with phase two. And, um, so you're only approving phase two tonight and then phase three we brought forward as an actual preliminary flat to you at a later date. Um, so really it's just those five blocks at this time. But if you have any questions, I can expand more, but that's the gist of it. And it's all in compliance with, um, the ordinances and they're not requesting any variances from the code, so. This is a public hearing, so I'll see if y'all have questions.
Hi, I live there. I live on Edna Lane. The problem that I have is, we talked about phase two, and I get the five houses, but you're not really, you're kind of stepping around on part three. Because the problem that I have is, I don't want the school coming through that neighborhood to get to twenty-one. So if they don't want to find another access other than three hundred, I would say that myself and my elderly neighbors that live around me feel the same way because we've discussed it. It is already the main street that comes in for those three streets. And I can sit out there and clock the people who run the stop sign, they can turn the corner on two wheels. And you would be putting high-speed traffic through there, all the moms coming from pickup from three hundred and apartments over there, everything. There's no way that that can be done.
So, yes, at this time, they don't have access, um, back to three hundred because there's another property. So that property doesn't actually go all the way to three hundred. So the only way that they could obtain access to County Road three hundred is by, you know, like that other property owner. Um, what we've looked at is either keeping the cul-de-sac, like basically keeping it contained onto the single property that it is on. Um, but their developers working to figure out if it's possible to either obtain that access point to get back to twenty-one or to three hundred. So it's still up in the air at this time. So I, I can't really, I understand what you're saying and your concern.
You will have a lot of angry homeowners about three hundred. So just so you know, I'm going record as saying that it's not appropriate. There should be a lot more thought for that.
And, and that's why, that's why we're taking this, uh, a slower pace to make sure that we can kind of figure out some of these issues before it gets fully developed. Um, that's why they presented only two phases with remainers, so that way we can work with some of the property owners.
And who is this line of group, the?
Uh, I think they're here tonight. Um, I saw them some.
Where are you guys located at? Where are y'all located at?
Right here. I have a few businesses, but, uh, there's some things like her.
Can you explain the sound barrier that you're on that letter a little more? Something about a sound barrier, because I live on one fifteen Ruby, so I'm right, I'm gonna be next door to another building or expanding the road or anything.
Alright.
Is there like the sound, certain times of days have been restricted to work? I don't want to, I pick up three o'clock in the morning and I get up early to sleep.
Yeah, I don't know about a sound barrier, um, that was mentioned, I'm not sure where you saw that, but, um.
A blue circle around our, our neighborhood.
That's who was notified. That's, that's the property owners that were notified as part of this preliminary flat. Um, but as far as construction goes, uh, most of the time they're within the hours of seven to five P M, you know, formal business hours. Um, but, I mean, that's something that is not at the construction phase yet, so if we need to address a sound situation, then I'm gonna ask the applicant to consider it.
I'd like that to be considered then. That should be on record. Like you said, between seven, go later, five, go later than six.
For a second, we have a noise ordinance. Yeah.
Yeah, we do have a noise ordinance.
That pertains to that. Did you hear that? The city has a noise ordinance that pertains to construction during specific hours.
And what is that, specific hours?
Yeah, I don't know offhand, but, you know, I don't know if y'all wanna speak to this. I don't, I wouldn't expect most home builders to be working in the middle of the night, you know, if that's.
Well, I know, but like four o'clock, they do it a lot at four o'clock in the morning.
Most of the courses they do is six o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning, but, uh, but we're gonna come five in the hours, I don't have to be four o'clock in the morning. I'm usually there at four to five. I know I don't wanna be there at four. But we do have to be pretty early, you know, we can't, can't four in the afternoon, we're gonna be in the summer.
I have two questions. The first one, where would you go around to get to twenty-one? Around where the bell dogs are being on that side or around the back part where there's woods on the other side? Just curious.
Um, so when Edna Hill was originally designed, um, phase one was the only one that was recorded as a flat.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the original intent was that it would be done in four phases. Phase four is the property that's between the Sheriff's Department and the back there.
Okay.
Um, so that property is not owned by this applicant and so there's not an actual connection to get back to twenty-one at this time. Um, so the wooded part that is adjacent to.
Off of April on that, correct? Like at the end of April where the cul-de-sac is or the food spot there?
Yeah, not, not there, not there. It would be, it would be the far south side of the property to get back to County Road three hundred.
That would be, that would be towards the Sheriff's.
Yeah, okay.
That would be the better option.
Another question. The roads?
Yeah.
So the roads and the cul, like the, they're not cul-de-sacs, but the curbs. There was some deterioration of that.
There was a lot of deterioration.
Okay, watch out. Anyway, would these big trucks come in through? Is there some consideration about the spaces, I guess, about care of that or? I mean, big trucks break a lot of, you know, divots and all that kind of stuff. So what, what is the consideration for that? I'm just curious.
Um, I think as the project goes forward into the future phases, once it's completed, then we can build that into, uh, the C I P plan. Um, for road construction and reconstruction. Um, I would say that would be the best approach to do it after construction is done.
Yeah, I gotcha, I gotcha.
But your dog could never be that far out.
Yeah, for the, for the.
Because that, the entrance is already got a big hot hole there.
Ten-foot hot hole that were, I mean, I'm spinning out when I try to pull in my own. And there's only one way in and out of subdivision unless you're
which people are starting to do and that's very annoying.
Yeah, the entrance of, uh, Edna Hill was damaged when text doctor did twenty-one last time.
And they've not, no way.
They've not filled all of it and it's just gotten bigger since then.
So if you're talking running semis and how great trucks through there, it's gonna be cratered by the time that subdivision starts.
Yeah, let me look into that because textod does so much right away that, that they were lost before, so.
But they ended right there.
They ended right there.
No, broken just beyond it and.
Yeah, and it's a big, it's bad.
We, we can look into that and it all, it depends. I, I know when you live in a particular area, you feel like the degradation is, is worse in your area than anywhere else it seems like, but we, we'll take a look at that and, and put that in our C I P plan. It would have to see, you know, to your question about how long are we gonna wait?
Well, I can, to wait to redo the whole thing to the end, but if you make repairs now, so it doesn't get worse while these trucks are going over it, that could, I could tell you right after.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that. We found that in our, our last several years of, it, it hadn't been street repaired, it's been street reconstruction because there's been a lack of base that was, was pushing these streets. So what we're trying to do now is we're trying to go in and fix it right so it lasts.
I have a question. In front of our house, I go on April, oh, yeah, and there was a water leak about four, five months ago. And it threw lockdown and then now they come back and they get a repair. But the same thing that did repair, there's already a big old dent in that where they didn't put enough base or tar, whatever you call it. So they're gonna come back and do a fix instead of repair or they're gonna just?
No, certainly, we'll, we'll run back by, we'll, we'll look at it.
Cause that was the very same day, there is, there was.
And garbage started coming back up.
And it's already sucked.
The garbage truck run, run by that day too?
Yeah, they have to, but two inches of asphalt.
Yeah, the construction vehicles are not gonna be able to get up and down Edna Hill at the entrance. They're gonna make that hole. We're all gonna be trapped in houses. Those, it's getting bad as it is. You get a semi's going up and down there to do their work.
Thank you for your consideration. We appreciate it.
Is there any more discussion on the Edna Hill subdivision phase two?
I have a question. Are you going to be other phases or are we gonna do it again?
Uh, there will be another, um, preliminary flat for phase three and we'll get another public hearing.
Okay, okay, thank you. And that, I have a question, sorry. And that phase three will only go in if there's another entrance and exit to the end of subdivision, correct?
Phase three can continue. It'll be that phase four which is early.
Looking to sell phase four, that's the one that.
Phase three will finish out the loop with April Street, Ruby Street.
Okay.
So phase three is good to go right now?
Uh, phase two, phase two.
Yeah, phase, phase two and then phase three are part of this preliminary flat. Phase four will be the next one.
So they're all gonna be in that paintfield?
Yeah.
Why?
So, so how many houses are in phase two and three then?
Uh, one. One, three.
You said five and two.
Five and two and then twelve in phase two.
And when is construction scheduled to start then on phase two?
So this is just a preliminary flat. Um, they still have to submit their construction and engineering drawings and then bring forward the final plot. So you will be notified for another public hearing when they do the final plot for phase three and then construction, I think, after that. We'll receive another notice, that why not, for all of them.
But again, the last phase, which is four, that's the one that we're not going in till we have access. And that's when we all find out if it's gonna be between the Sheriffs and Edna or opening three hundred towards, yeah.
Or self-contained, there's three options.
And what would be self-contained, the way to?
It'll just make a loop, so they can finish that out, but it'll just make another loop. So it'd be all on that one.
So it's all of them?
Oh, one is.
Yeah, one is.
One is.
So there's three to be made in with phase two, three, if there's, there's more, there's two.
Yeah.
Three, four.
Four, I don't know yet, cause it's not a part of this and depending on how the loop would have to exist or if there's not a loop and it does say, guys, so it's a different road, uh, we could change.
Question again. So you were saying that another road was needed if there was fifty houses or more? Are we counting the houses that exist plus the ones that are being built? Do you want to add it to this?
So this is counting these, this, maybe, and, that's why we're only doing phase two, phase three. Two and three.
Any further discussion? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the preliminary flat for Edna Hill subdivision phase two? Point nine four acres, parcel ID number six one one three three?
Mike, move.
Do we have a second?
I'm like a second.
All in favor of approving the preliminary flat for Edna Hill subdivision phase two, point nine four acres, parcel ID number six one one three three, raise your right hand? None opposed, motion passes. Next, still in open hearing, public hearing. Rubicon subdivision, parcel ID number one seven eight six one, one zero three two six oh, part of one seven eight six two. Preliminary flat for a residential subdivision of approximately five point five six acres, followed by discussion, possible action on approving the preliminary flat for Rubicon. Parcel ID number one seven eight six one, one oh three two six oh, part of one seven eight six two.
Alright, so, uh, this preliminary flat that's presented in front of you is for a detached single-family residential subdivision for five twenty-five, point five six acres on Old Street north of Woodson Division, south of Highway twenty-one. It contains twenty-six single-family lots.
Excuse me just a minute. It's really getting hard to hear what's going on.
We're, we're about to shut the doors. We're, we're about to shut the doors.
You'll have, you'll have feedback if we turn it on. Cause it's such a small room, there'll be a lot of feedback if we turn it on. Who's the commentary?
The whole, the whole.
Bro, scroll right. Uh, it's page thirty.
Say twenty-six lots.
Yes, ma'am, twenty-six. Okay, so anyways, as I was saying, um, this is, uh, twenty-six detached single-family lots. Um, this will be a self-contained subdivision, so it will not be connected to the subdivision. Uh, three lots will be located off of Old Street and they have been set back far enough off the street. So in the event that Old Street needs to be widened in the future, um, it will not impact the homes once they're built. Uh, detention and open space areas have been, um, provided, um, at the entrance of the subdivision for drainage, um, as in addition to a common space. Um, below you, um, in y'all's package, y'all have, um, the variances that are requested. And so that is, um, one, uh, for the minimum lot width to be fifty feet. Um, the subdivision regulations require that the minimum lot width be fifty-five feet. And so, uh, varying from that to, uh, minimize it to five feet. And then a variance, um, for the side setback to be a minimum of five feet. Um, the property, uh, is technically three separate tracks. Um, so when you look at it on the CAD, it's, um, split up. And so doing this plat one will combine the whole property together, but then also separate it into those individual lots. Um, the, sorry, um, staff and strain engineering, uh, feel that the waivers being requested are minor changes and that they will not affect, affect the integrity of the development as they're complying with the Caldwell, the envisioned Caldwell comprehensive plan as well as all other regulations. Um, and the city of Caldwell, both of these things. Um, I think the applicant is here, so if he has anything he wants to say. Um, I did, he provided some links to the, uh, home builders websites and then some comments related to that, um, in your package, so.
We're just super excited to be here. I think we're bringing a couple of builders, uh, with lead roots in Bryan, Texas, in conversation. Uh, we envision something similar to in Bryan, uh, a subdivision called Rudder Point. Um, this is a subdivision for Buster Rudder High School. Um, and they're fifty-foot lots with forty-foot wide houses on five-foot setbacks. Uh, and we're envisioning hopefully a price range of somewhere in the two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollar range. Although probably closer to three hundred is probably realistic for fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet. Oh, uh, Adley Homes, which is owned by Brian Reeves, has plans up to about two thousand square feet. Um, and those houses are pushing three hundred plus, uh, at this time. Uh, New Face Homes, which is, uh, Sharon and Steve Pittman, uh, similar, uh, type product that they have available as well. And, um, appreciate being able to work with the city and, and hopefully bring a nice product to town in this area of town. Very pleased to do it. Any questions? And Jeff is our engineer as well, so.
You can answer any question you all, uh, on the engineering side.
Still a public hearing if anyone else has a question?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many lots will there be?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
So the only things will be all Old Street?
Yes, sir.
What about the drainage? Have you addressed the drainage?
We, we have not, um, completely designed the ponds. We have worked with the city's engineer on the undering, sizing, like you are thirty-two, uh, protection ponds there. The wall on Old Street, definitely, but we sent you the protection line on Old Street. There's no underground structure.
That's correct. Already had problems.
Yes, sir. Uh, we'll work with, with city staff, just give them a seat or we'll comply with all the rules and regulations.
Any further questions, discussion? Okay, do we have, uh, motion to approve the preliminary plat for Rubicon subdivision? Five point five six acres, parcel ID number one seven eight six one, one zero three two, two six zero, part of one seven eight six two. Do we have a motion?
Sure.
Do you have a second?
I'll click it.
All in favor of approving the preliminary plat for Rubicon subdivision, raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. Finally, in public hearing, Arrowhead subdivision Phase Three. Parcel ID number one two five seven eight. Preliminary plat for a residential subdivision of approximately twenty-four point five nine six acres. Followed by discussion and possible action on approving the preliminary plat for Arrowhead subdivision. Phase Three, parcel ID number one two five seven eight.
So this preliminary plat that's being presented in front of you tonight is for the Phase Three of Arrowhead Farms. Uh, this is ninety single-family residential lots. Um, they will be off of, uh, it'll be another, um, access point off of County Road three hundred, um, to the south of the second entrance, um, to that subdivision. And then there will be another connection that, um, steps out to the first street when you come into the subdivision. Um, the overall development plan, um, will continue to the west with Phases Four, Five and Six. Um, and then those additional phases will connect back to Davidson Creek Park to provide, um, some more amenities and open space to the residents and, um, of that entrance will also the city. And, um, the, uh, variances that are being requested for this one is, uh, to match the existing public utility easement that was, um, previously approved in Phase One and Two, which was fourteen feet. Um, and the next one is to allow the side setbacks to be, uh, seven and a half feet. And. Other than that, everything else is, uh, in line with the comprehensive plan and, um, all the other codes of the city. So any questions on this one?
Phase One is complete and they're working on Phase Two?
Yes. Phase Two, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say half, halfway. And they said that they don't plan to start Phase Three until they get at least seventy-five to ninety percent done with Phase Two.
I'm an engineer on this one as well. Stack all our projects and one, uh, Steve Rowe is the developer, so I'm, uh, uh, I'd be happy to answer your questions, but they, they have told us we try to do it once. Coming up immediately.
Yes, sir.
Who's gonna be responsible for the fence between, uh, track eight fifty-seven and the subdivision, however it's, uh, developed?
So they, they would be building.
I'm not angry.
They, they would be building a fence along those new lots and then the existing bits would.
Yeah, the developer will be building a fence itself?
Yeah, each of those lots that back up to, I'm seeing, you're talking.
Eight fifty-seven.
South side.
Yeah, the point down the road.
Yes, that one, so yeah. The, the new lots would have the fence built, like the houses above it.
Would there be any chance, would that be an annex, uh, uh, doing a landowner be able to have city utilities?
Um, that was annexed last year or the year before.
So, well, the, that's both of them, it's doing both, uh, the one that's been developed now and this one here.
Yeah, so those two properties, yes, but no one else outside of those properties would have.
No, no city utilities could be available for those, for that property.
City utilities.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could have that discussion once the, the infrastructure is in the ground. You know, it depends on what you're thinking about. If you're talking about a single family or something like that, then, you know, that can probably be accommodated. If you're talking about another subdivision, we would have to, have to be properly sized. So it, it, it depends on what scope we're looking at.
If you're looking at one or two houses or ten or twenty houses.
One or twenty.
Yeah, we could, I, I think it's, the, the earlier we knew about it, the, the, the easier we could accommodate it with, with easements and things like that. And that would probably need to work out with the, the developers as well.
Any more discussion on the Arrow?
At what point are they gonna? Are they falling into the drainage, because they're draining into a, a major part of it?
Yes, sir, so, um, it, it's not showing on this drawing, but we're playing a, a large detention pond that would be down here for the park that would be built with this phase. Um, the, along County Road three hundred, there is a drainage way that we're staying out of that long common area. Most of the drainage out of Phase One is here, you have a few bad drainage. Uh, the drainage from this phase, uh, some of it goes to the, the front park, but we're, we're catching as much as possible to get into that school market. This pond that would be built down on the park.
To let it be dead on this one.
Yeah, I did provide it in your package, I just realized. Um, let me see, right.
You got a hurry, boy.
Yeah, can you pull up?
So thi- this is Phase One and Two. Um, this property, the hill property is, is basically this piece here. Uh, this is the flood plain here and then that's, that's the flood plain I started off earlier. That, that will remain common area that we're staying out of this flood plain that we're building. It's a large detention pond out here with, um, the Phase Three and then we can have six ponds right there. It's a, we'll capture the water in the underground storm drain and pipe.
Any further questions on the Arrowhead subdivision? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Arrowhead subdivision? Phase Three, twenty-four point five nine six acres, parcel ID number one two five seven eight. Do we have a motion?
No.
Do we have a second? All in favor of approving the preliminary plat for Arrowhead subdivision? Phase Three, twenty-four point five nine six acres, parcel ID number one two five seven eight, please raise your right hand. None opposed, motion passes. Um, I would like to comment in this public hearing session. All of these, uh, developers in Quinn Waters, Edna Hills, Rubicon and Arrowhead, I hope you all know they have done extensive research. They've invested some already millions of dollars. And they think that Caldwell is a great place to live. They think that they're, they have a chance of, of making beautiful neighborhoods in our wonderful community. And, um, I'm just hoping that we can welcome all of the people that find Caldwell as wonderful and great as I do. And, um, I'm excited to welcome all of you to Caldwell, so thank you.
We appreciate it.
There really is something to be afforded.
Yes.
Oh, we got a workshop tomorrow at six thirty, don't we?
Well, I mean, I get it, I'll tell you the story.
I was gonna say, this one was like.
Do you collect this from? We see a lot of, I'm not gonna, I'm not degress.
So part actually, you're marching right here and so that, that drainage is a pretty tiny river. So all of this would become part of the park once those. Uh, they haven't said anything yet just because they haven't gotten to this question. So they haven't really gotten to it.
They're gonna have something. I know smaller lots. Already a lot of them. I'm already a lot of them. Well, I'm just saying different topics. No building. So I'm trying to kind of.
Okay, on to regular agenda items. We will discuss, consider and possibly take action regarding awarding a bid for Project E D A, contract number zero eight dash zero one dash zero five six six, five five six six, located at the industrial park.
All right. You had your comment. Your time is short.
Uh, so this project, just to remind everybody, this was a project that the council considered and approved probably two years ago. We were gonna do some extensive work over in the industrial area, industrial park. When we first embarked on this, we had a lot more to the scope than what we do now, but since prices are skyrocketing, we've kind of choked it back down. The way this was bid out, and, and John Russ is here, was giving last year's show, so if I don't do a good job, I would complain, but still, don't jump in. What we tried to do was, was break this down into kind of a, a couple of different pieces so we could see some options and see different, um, uh, we can only evaluate costs a little bit better. So when we talk about Base Bid A, Base Bid B, and then Alt Bid B one, we're talking about street projects specifically on Industrial Boulevard that would flow down into the new Cap Fleet Development. So when Base Bid A, that's replacing a large section right in front of Non-Aires and then running, I guess you'd call it the, the northeast side of the road, just running that half of the road all the way down to the Cap Fleet Development, that's all in concrete. Okay, so that's what Base Bid A is. Base Bid B would be to go in and do all of that work. You know, asphalt, replacing the bases under there, replacing all the materials. Um, so you have new banks, new asphalt. Alt Bid B one would be same thing, we'd be doing asphalt, but you'd be doing like a reconstruction or reclaiming the base that's already there. So you pulverize and stabilize and, and then just overlaying of that. And then Base Bid C is a water line that runs down Access Road. So there's a couple of properties that are still to be developed in that area. And this would just kind of help to make those toward shovel-ready. And then they, they'd be able to sewer out the back, utilize and then construction that's gonna go on with the, uh, the Cap Fleet Development. So when looking at this, I, I put this sheet in front of you, we got this in yesterday. Uh, and I'll, Mr. Russ, jump in if he wants to, but, you know, ultimately, when, when we look at this, I think, especially with the traffic that we're gonna have, and the different traffic, freight and traffic that we're having there. I think, um, well, let me back up a little bit. So we had a total budget of right under a million dollars for this project. We've got a grant for seven hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars and then the remainder was about two hundred eighty-eight. The E D C put up half of that, so our share of this project right now is about a hundred and forty-three thousand and change. Um, if we chose to go the route of Base A, or Base Bid A, which would be the concrete, which I think would hold up a lot better in that area. Um, if we chose to go the route of base A, or base bid A, which would be the concrete, which I think would hold up a lot better in that area. Especially with the traffic we've got, and then take the bid for the water line as well, um, I think that total comes up to eight hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred eighty-four. So our, our construction budget, after we do engineering and grant administration, our construction budget's eight hundred twenty-five thousand. So if the city wanted to put an additional ten thousand in, we could go the route of concrete through that whole area that we're re, rehabbing, and then the water line as well. If not, there's, there's other couple of combinations we could, uh, we could look at, and I think those are captured on the front page of this, uh, summary that y'all have, so. Uh, that's, that's kind of the summary of it, I'm happy to answer any questions, do I leave anything out, John? So, questions? I don't know, do we have a good diagram?
And do you have a, a recommendation?
I would call the recommendation of the engineer and the fact that, that, that concrete that we put in there would hold up a lot better, a lot longer than any asphalt we could go back in.
Check one about the contractor.
Yeah, if, if we go, so if we do that, if we decide we want to utilize base A and C, I, I don't, I'll defer, but I think Texcon is gonna be a lot of it.
Base bid A, concrete and water line, and alt bid, Texcon, low pack. If, if it's, if we went base bid B, asphalt, that, I was sort of contracting, water lines. If you went base bid D and base bid C, you have two contractors.
So as far as the regulation?
Recommendation for the contractor, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, like Texcon's been in business for a long time, they're, they're the ones that are doing the infrastructure for Cap Lake right now as well, so, um, with them being the low bid, I, I don't have any issue.
We have learned from experience that accepting the lowest bid is not always in our best favor, um, however, um, if they are a reputable company.
Yeah, Tex, Texcon, Texcon, but this is about to work regularly.
Yeah, so prior, I'll say, sure, I mean, they do a lot of, of city water, uh, yeah, they're up there.
Well, they do a lot of work at city, but it's been like twenty-five years.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, I move that we go with Texcon on the base bid A and the base bid C and increase the, add the additional ten thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars funds that are needed.
Do we have a second for that motion? All in favor, raise your right hand, none opposed, motion passes. Okay, department and community reports. Burger King, police, how does that? In expense, the police went to Burger King. Any other?
So, a lot of times, let me explain. A lot of times, our officers will have to transport to someone to all stand or something like that, and that's.
If they're, if they're out of danger and must, uh, they, they generally take the fuel car and.
Got it, just confirm.
Throw that town. It's good to see the sales tax up over two ninety-five for a year. Before previous year.
And I, I don't think we budgeted for like a consignance officer, um, there's lots of reports for, um, code enforcement, any progress being made?
There, oh, when I did the report, I know that there's been several that have been moved already. Okay, and, and there, so I was just looking through it now, trying to figure out what it is now. I was on vacation last week, slow vacay, I'm a little bit, so I didn't get to check on it, other than what I saw when I was driving by.
Any discussion on any of the department or community reports? Okay, onward, administrative reports. We'll start with Camden White, city administrator.
What state?
No.
I just came to hear for it.
First, yeah, thank you for all your work on the development project, we had that, the public hearings, and everyone was able to, to comment, um. Have you got a little bit on, on the Sage Energy deal, I have been in contact, we, we had a meeting last week. So all of this is developed in the last couple of weeks, you know, the, the interest in this, where is this pad going to be located, where the well can be. I think a lot of it is becoming more permanent, you know, as the days go by. I was trying to write down all these things, but I guess most folks left. The permit now, so this is, this is no longer within, the, the location is being considered no longer within, within the city of Caldwell. So the permit would go to the county, so, so that's how that would be handled, as far as, um, there are no city proceeds for this, we're, we're not involved in this well at all. As far as city roads go, I have had a conversation, as, as a lot of folks were in here, they talked about Sage Energy utilizing Country Club Road. Right now, there, there's still discussion being had, there's been open discussion with Sage Energy, um, they're, they're open, i- if, if they do use Country Club Road. They're open to a maintenance agreement to where they would come in and, and repair any damages that might be, might be caused through, through the extra traffic. I think from a safety standpoint, we need to go over and evaluate, make sure that there is the ability to get in and out, you know, but when, when it comes to permitting and a lot of, uh, oil well development, we do live in the state of Texas, and, uh, the laws that are written are not written in the city's favors. So, we have to evaluate that, I have to, I've already bounced a couple of emails and calls off our attorneys just to see where we stand. I will tell you the, the code ordinance that was written that governs this was written back in nineteen eighty-nine. And there were some large legislation passed in twenty fifteen that preempts a lot of our code ordinance. So we'll, we'll need to be careful of the stand that we take with this. Uh, but, but the one thing I want to stress is that, you know, there has been open communication between Sage and the city. And we, we're hoping to move this thing in a direction where, you know, the least amount of people are impacted. And, you know, everybody at the end of the day kind of gets what they're looking for.
What did you say, forty-five days?
Yeah, and that, that's the other thing, when, when they're looking at, they, they sent me so, a document this afternoon, kind of a outline of what they expected. I haven't got a chance to thoroughly review it, but in that, they looked at the whole process of drilling and being out of there between thirty-five and forty-five days.
Is it, is it something that's a one-watt pad or a multiple?
My understanding is one. So a lot of this stuff again is, is just, just developing.
And, can I phone a friend and, uh, uh, someone in the business, Jesse as well? Uh, my understanding is that an oil company has the right to put a pad or drill, really they sort of trump, um.
Mineral rights do trump surface rights, I guess is a good way to say that.
Is that correct? And, yes, because they, they have drilled, like you say, inside the city limits of major cities, so.
So I, I would say my approach in this is I would, I'm trying to approach it in a way that, so we can all kind of get along, because I, we're, we're gonna be careful of how strong of a stance that we take.
So I think Brazos County has a noise ordinance, and they, they require them to build a sound, a sound barrier around.
So, is this thing in the electrical field there? Like A M's got big waters, rather transformers.
They've got a lot of restrictions, like low tanks, everything else, but the oil company's gonna do whatever they're gonna do. And like you said, compressor, and ball stations, whatever, they'll do whatever they have to the state or, or it's good. Present time value money for them is give it out of whole face, or just work for today, then it's gonna be them, so, that's not gonna be a problem.
So they're, they're, they're also in contact with the county and trying to get everything in line with their, but they, they've been cooperative, is, is the one thing that I would say.
Then I believe you said that, that completion would be what, maybe three or four trucks, actually trucks, uh, that need to go down, it's.
How far from the, uh, the, the, how long, where do they expect?
Uh, you're looking at about, right there, where it would bend down towards, uh, the actual Country Club, probably another six hundred feet up, two minutes.
I'll, I'll say, my parents had one probably a hundred and twenty feet behind their house. And it was, they, they, they didn't talk to, uh, the oil company, and did everything they could to get as far away from houses as possible. Oil company told them they had, they can drill within one hundred feet of the home, I don't know if that's still true. Um, but, uh, they did, they did the best, they both came out happy, and you can't even hear my parents. They're, they're clear line, clear line of sight, and you can barely hear it running.
Okay.
The only thing would be just turning it off on the road, initially a lot of heavy equipment, and it's going to be a toll person. Bringing that in and out, left bag will have a spread of truck traffic, those are wide enough where two trucks passing each other, big trucks, or truck ads in on traffic. And that, the only thing that, but that, we have to stop, we have to stop.
So I think we'll have to go and, and evaluate the safety, let me say, the discussion will be cooperative, and then, you know, we're working with the county.
Of course, the entrance, that's gonna be Texas, you can't.
No, I mean, the entrance of the, uh, of wherever, when you turn off, when you drive, country club drive, and you're turning that, you know, the radius is, you're gonna, this one, that asshole.
About onto thirty-six?
No, no, uh, a sharp turn after that, yeah, wherever that pass would be at when you turn off the country club, coming on and off, on and off.
Hopefully, it'll be more of a, a straight path, and there, there's not gonna be a turn.
Hopefully.
And then, you know, they, they did say whenever they were, they would do move, uh, rig move in or anything like that, they would have security guards sitting there making sure there wasn't any traffic that accidentally made its way into, get to the Country Club area, so.
No, I mean, thirty-six, thirty-six, I mean, not the Texcon, I mean, they have to, I'm sorry, I lost it.
You said entrance off thirty-six to Country Club Road is county and Texcon?
Yeah, county, county probably goes a little bit fast against the church.
They got fifteen hundred foot of county moving, thirty-six past the church.
Anything else?
So, I'll continue to work with Sage and the county and can't do anything without y'all's approval, so it'll come back to y'all. Um, we went to T M L two weeks ago, Forrest got presented, did an excellent job, um, ended up learning quite a bit, meeting a lot of different folks and different solutions as far as the dangers go, so that was a, a good experience for us, and I think that's about it for now. We'll be rid of that.
This is why I will. Mr. Willis.
City Hall. City Hall, we're still waiting on the, uh, the overall engineering report, that was, they, they did some, some testing over there, it's been a couple of months now. Just waiting on everything to finalize, there's, there's a lot that's going into it, they're having to go back and look through all of the original drawings and make sure that everything was built according to specs, and it's just taking a little bit longer. Can't do anything until we have that report, so we know the scope of things to come.
Jesse?
Um, I too attended the T M L conference with Forrest and Camden, I have an exhibition hall that is larger than the city of Caldwell, seriously, it's huge. Um, and it was funny because we were together the first day of the afternoon, and then we sort of split up, and it was funny to see where Camden was interested in talking to people, and Forrest was interested. And I was interested in playground equipment, splash pad, fun stuff and Christmas decorations, so, um, our goal is to hurriedly finish City Hall so we can purchase those fun things and do some great things for our community. Um, just for you city council members, the Brazos Valley Food for Families food drive is Wednesday, December the seventh. I will be there from five thirty A M until seven P M, would love to have you come out and, um, um, participate, shake hands, accept checks, make donations, sort food, stack food, all of those fun things that happened. Um, for the record, last year, Burleson County, per capita, we killed it again, we collected fifty thousand dollars, and, um, I know that's possibly unrealistic this year, but we're just gonna do our very best because it impacts so many people in our community, so, um, even if you can come after your job, that would be great. On this, or before your job, again, we'll be there at about three, so. Um, and my final thing is, um, today I stopped at the civic center to volunteer for the Brazos Valley Gives, and they have this amazing, um, pumpkin patch. And while I was there, a, a complete total stranger was driving by, saw it, stopped in, went to the pumpkin patch, gave a donation to Brazos Valley Gives. But then I saw the civic center ground, and, um, I was really sort of embarrassed because the civic center is used every single day. And, um, I just, just think that we as a community need to do a better job of mowing, edging, cleaning flower beds. Everything around the civic center because it truly is a showpiece for our community, I'm very proud of it, but again, it looks somewhat abandoned today. And so if, um, we can get a team of, not you anymore, a team of people to, um, seriously, it's gonna take a team to get it cleaned up, because especially with the pumpkin patch there. Total, complete strangers are looking at it, hey, this looks like fun, it's a picture opportunity, and then if you look where one of the pictures places could be, it's a big area of just weeds, overgrown weeds. And, um, I think Caldwell can do better, so, and that's it. Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? We need to adjourn.